Melanie, roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Colleton.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Here.
Mayor Crowder.
Here.
Okay, item two, consent calendar. One roll call vote is taken for all items. Do I hear a motion?
Do we know the resolution numbers on this?
Resolutions number 202561 and 62.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Boland, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 3A. Here an informal update for the Paradise Sewer Project, including review of a short list of sewer system alternatives, presentation of preliminary evaluation results, and opportunity for public input and feedback. Mark.
All right, good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Crowder and council. Again, my name is Mark Maddox. I'm the Public Works Director and Town Engineer for the Town of Paradise. And I really want to acknowledge and thank everyone for coming out tonight for a special Paradise Town Council meeting. I will here go to our next slide to show our meeting agenda. As the mayor stated, we have a full agenda here for you tonight to go over the project, look at our project alternatives analysis, and as well as the recommendation of our ad hoc committee and next steps. And then at the end, we'll have a time for public comments, where tonight we do not have cards available, but you will have an opportunity to come forward. And we're thinking alternating between each microphone. And you'll have about three minutes each. Each time someone comes up, we'll have three minutes, just like a normal council meeting. So with that, again, we'll introduce the full team here tonight, giving the presentation. We have Allison McReynolds to my left. She is our lead with the HDR team. We have folks from our ad hoc committee, including town staff. I really want to recognize their efforts, as well as Mayor Crowder, Councilmember Lang. On the call, we have Clint Snyder from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. He's also participated in the committee, as well as Kevin Phillips from Paradise Irrigation District here this evening, part of the ad hoc committee as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So the Paradise Sewer Project has an extensive history, since even before the town was incorporated. And here on the right of the screen, you can see the number of different times this has been looked at. And I love kicking off tonight saying that here tonight in 2025, we have never been closer to having a project that can actually be built, constructed, and operated. And we are so excited to share that, the reasons behind that here tonight. And as we move forward into this process and gathering your input. But we have high confidence about the energy, the effort, and the expertise that has brought forward, the recommendations for you to provide input on. And the project history has all leveraged to this, which is really exciting. So with that, I can go over a brief background, not all the way back to 1969. But since the 2022 Programmatic Environmental Impact Report was adopted on behalf of a previous version of the project, which was based in regionalization in partnership with the city of Chico. That effort looked to do a collection system in town and have the treatment and disposal portion of our project handled at the city's existing plant. So over the course of time, including us hiring a progressive design-build team, which brought the expertise, actually have a contractor and a designer that knows what it takes to build it, give us really important information that the cost that was forecasted was higher than the budget available. And at the same time, we saw our funding resources go down at the state level. So with that, in 2025 now, we had a special meeting in January, where this project really did take a major shift back, back towards a local option here in Paradise. With that, there was an ad hoc committee established. I already mentioned, you'll see more about that here in a moment. But the key foundational important part about the ad hoc committee is the effort to reach back out to the community and ensure that every single idea, alternative, is explored from you, the folks that make this community and that have an interest in seeing this project and this recovery be successful as a result of this project. So with that in mind, we extended numerous invitations, public meetings, council updates, as well as individual appointments to meet with individual vendors and community members. And so you'll hear more about that here shortly. Bringing us here to tonight, kind of the presentation of all of the work that's been completed on behalf of the committee over the last six months. And then again, tonight, as the mayor said, kicking us off, we are here for just really a presentation of the information, the findings. No formal action is being recommended taken tonight. And that really kind of kick off yet another public input period, where you'll have opportunity to speak here in front of your community. But then again, if that's not enough time, there will be opportunities to meet with us again as staff and as our consultant team and the committee to be able to provide your input on these findings and recommendations. And then from there, we're looking to have another meeting, same place, same time, but August 14th, where actual action will be recommended. And we'll leave it to the council to take it from there. So with that in mind, we'll go ahead and continue on. As I mentioned, the sewer ad hoc committee was formed with really a core purpose that everyone really found common ground on quite quickly at our first meeting, just shortly after that special meeting in January. And that's to increase the project's momentum while keeping the public apprised of project progress, to find a fundable, permissible, scalable wastewater collection and treatment solution here in Paradise. I mentioned the members of this committee, the mayor, Crowder, councilmember Lang, town manager Jim Goodwin, myself, Colin Nelson, Chris Nicoletti, expertise in-house and staff, Paradise Irrigation District, their district manager, Kevin Phillips, as well as two board members, Bob Matthews and Mark Sulick. A robust team from HDR, serving as our technical advisory experts, as well as participation again from the Regional Water Quality Control Board with Clint Snyder. So thank you again for everyone. So the goals, building off of the core purpose statement of the sewer committee, was to achieve those goals, fundable, permissible, scalable wastewater treatment collection solution. But really, an emphasis on delivering an affordable Phase 1 project, and that's really key. We understand that a $300, $400 million project is not attainable. That doesn't mean that a sewer is not attainable here in Paradise, that we have to think differently about a scalable solution that has, that can be built in phases over time. So with that, we will have, we will be looking at a reduced collection system area. Because regardless of how, the how, it's very, very costly to reach miles and miles out for a collection system. So the best way to look at this is the most efficient and affordable way to have a collection system area for a Phase 1 and a treatment facility and a dispersal method. And you'll hear more about that in a little bit. But the goal here, underlining all of this, we've been through a tremendous amount of trials and tribulations as a community, including the 2018 campfire and our recovery since that. But the funds available to us now are really here for a short period of time, and they're available. And our goal is to utilize those funds, as well as funds that are probable, to as quickly as possible to deliver a project now. And that's really key. This is a critical moment where if the funds aren't used and if the project is not delivered, we may not see the level of funding available to the town at this moment in time, available any time in the future. So on that note, we are currently operating under funds that were really enabled by the 2018 campfire and the disaster, what's called Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds. Those are congressionally appropriated funds that are delivered through HUD, Housing and Urban Development, at the federal level, administered by the state at Housing and Community Development. And the Town of Paradise has been so fortunate to receive these funds to dedicate to critical projects across the board, whether it be roadway improvements, evacuation round improvements, or the Paradise Sewer Project. And so with that, there's $30 million associated with pre-construction activities, and then $35 million secured for post, for actual construction activities. We've been able to secure an EPA grant that's pending at this point for $1.75 million, as well as we're monitoring the State Water Board and the Division of Financial Assistance for Clean Water SRF funding opportunities, where we really feel very, very confident that at least $28 million is available to the tenants to apply for additional funds on top of that. We are extremely grateful for the efforts of Congressman Lamalfo approving an authorization through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers 219 program that sets aside a $50 million authorization. But that's a really key caveat there, that it requires congressional appropriation. And so we are working those processes as quickly as we can. At this point, our understanding of this $50 million is that it's going to be best suited for a second phase of the Paradise Sewer Project, because we cannot wait for these funds to be approved. So with that in mind, when we look at the overall alternatives available to us and the cost to complete, right now, we have a budget of probable and available funds of $84.8 million. So that's the sum of items one through four, minus the $10 million expended to date to really leverage even the efforts that have gone into leading us up to this point and moving us forward. So with that, I'm going to keep going, not quite yet. So looking at the project alternatives analysis activities, I already covered a little bit about what happened in January, but really kind of looking again, the activities over the last five months. And the reason why we're here tonight is that call for input from those public, from vendors, you'll see in a moment that we made contacts with bio membrane, or yeah, membrane bioreactor batch plants that can be delivered on site. We looked at compostable toilets. We looked at verma filtration or worms. You'll see a lot about that here in a couple of minutes to really just make sure that everyone who had an idea to contribute was heard. And so that's really important for us and the committee and the community to know that whatever solution is recommended into the future, tonight, and in August, that it's done so in a way that every option has been explored. We had a special community input meeting on March 6th. We had a nice little community poll. We had Paradise Irrigation District participation in the committee meetings, starting in March, which was phenomenal. We've had, again, those member meetings and with equipment vendors. We had an advocacy trip to DC, where we met with both state senators and our congressional delegation with Congressman Lamalfo, advocating for the project, talking with EPA, talking with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and really advocating for this project, and just how critical it is for the Town of Paradise and our recovery. So with that, in June, we started our wastewater facility tours, because it's not just enough to hear ideas. It's what we really need is to know what works. And what better way to find out what works? By talking to folks that are operating and responsible and serving their communities. So you'll see more about that effort here in a moment. And here we are tonight in July, our special meeting. And I mentioned the plan for another special meeting in August. So amongst our community, industry, and public agency input meetings, you see the list of names. I'm going to go ahead and start going through each of them, because they all brought something different to the table that's valuable to share here tonight. Our first meeting, I believe, was with Jeff Gillingham. He brought forward ideas from experience he had in the northern states, and I believe some in Canada, about low-pressure force mains that operate between 40 and 50 PSI, pumps at each service connection and does not require a leach field. And it was really great to meet with Jeff and hear his ideas on the project. We also met with Cliff Jacobson, and we heard a lot about the step collection system. And with the step collection system, you pump wastewater from a septic tank into a collection system. That's the solids stay in the tank, and that collection system is then pressurized and has a delivery system to a treatment location. They also, or Cliff also shared information about a biotrickling filter treatment system. And then really important priority for Cliff was to have irrigation for fire cannons, beneficial reuse, looking at purple pipes, and having recycled water, maybe even back to homes. So again, I want to say thank you to Cliff. Bill Kellogg presented at our community meeting on March 6th. But he also met with us and brought some great ideas about constructed wetlands. It allows for infiltration and evaporation naturally. This process removes pollutants through biological, chemical, and physical means. And it takes the place essentially of the leach lines, but does need a larger area. And I really do want to thank Bill, and you'll see in a moment, we actually got to see an operating constructed wetland. Want to thank next Kelly Consulman. And Kelly, I saw you here tonight. Thank you again for being here. Thank you for meeting with us. Kelly represents, as part of, the Jet Package Plant System, shared ideas about the opportunity to have really individual, what I would call kind of clustered systems or little microsystems throughout town, where you're not limited by one collection system to one treatment location and one dispersal location, where you can essentially have smaller installations throughout the Town of Paradise. Smaller leach fields, smaller footprints, and can be installed underground. Dana Ripley, we met with Dana Ripley on his ideas to contribute to the project. He brought forward some ideas through using Arendco step systems. Again, really critical information there about utilizing step, pumping wastewater from septic tanks into a collection system, the solids stay in the tank, and having a pressurized collection system. The treatment type I recommended was an attached-growth, multi-stage trickling filter. It has a four-tower system, and the wastewater essentially is sprayed over the attached-growth media that helps filter out those pathogens and help the treatment process. A big priority for Dana as well was seeing purple pipe reuse. Here, starting to meet with some of the vendors that came forward. The first one was Aeromod. They provide a pre-designed activated sledge plant, which includes aeration, settling, recirculation, and digestion. There's a common wall construction. It's easily expandable and has a relatively simple operations and maintenance effort. And there's applications here, even near the Town of Paradise, with the community of Quincy. BioFiltrow, they came forward. This was the verma filtration or worms. There's a layer of soil and worms that help remove the nutrients and a layer of gravel for filtration. Seeing the photos here, you can kind of see a larger area that has really these worm beds that help naturally degrade the wastewater into a, in a process that's able to be treated, which is great. The next vendor we met with was Closcena. They actually came to one of our council meetings, I believe the January meeting, where there was a representative from Closcena, really grateful for his time, and then came back again in person, right, as well for, to talk about what Closcena offers. They serve other communities. We actually talked to one of the communities that uses a Closcena approach, which is the packaged membrane bioreactor system, where the wastewater is filtered through the membrane, and it's pre-designed, it's built off-site, and delivered on a truck. There's more reactors that can be added to increase capacity. So it's a really nice solution with a high level of treatment that can be scaled up as the community regrows. The next vendor input was from Fluidyne. This had a sequencing batch reactor, an SBR, similar to an MBR, but a little bit different. The aeration and settling happens in the same tank rather than different little components. This can be prepackaged or custom designed. They have about 50,000 gallons per day treatment for one packaged reactor. And it's an underground installation here on the left, and then two packaged SBRs on the right above ground. So there's some options there. The next was from Green Toilet. This is the compostable toilets, where there's no water or electricity needed. It's a technology, you know, pretty basic, as you can imagine. But it started in Finland, or at least this company was started in Finland. Permitting is challenging in the USA, depending on the region. But we really appreciated their time as well, providing input on the project. The next one was from Innovate Treat, sorry, Innovate Treat. They had a different version of the same MBR, but this one is with a skid. Wastewater is filtered through the membrane, pre-designed, major equipment assembled off-site and delivered. More skids can be added to increase capacity. So that's really great. Talking now, moving on to our tours, finding out what our friends and our neighbors have to offer as far as their experience in operating these types of systems. The first one was Rio Alto, near Cottonwood. That was my first time to this area, in a really beautiful space. And so they had a .1 MGD, that's 100,000 gallons per day. When we say .1 MGD, that's a tenth of a million gallons. So we'll try and have the same terminology here. But for those that don't use MGD every day, just know that means 100,000 gallons per day. They have a collection system that's really based in gravity. They have, their treatment approach is with bar screens, an oxidation ditch, secondary clarifier, chlorine disinfection, and their sledge drying beds. Their discharge method, though, however, is evaporation-percolation ponds through those constructed wetlands. And they do have public access with walking trails. You see the picture in the lower right. Really beautiful out there, Lake California, and great application of a constructed wetland that the community gets to enjoy. They do have higher regulations. Title 22 applies due to the public access, but it does enable some great community benefits. So I really appreciated seeing their operations and hearing from them, that they actually switched from a river discharge to the Sacramento River because of the regulations that continuously increase on surface water discharge. It's not easy to treat wastewater and put it back into water bodies that essentially are then sourced for future drinking water. So with that, there's higher standards, and those standards are always increasing. So even with a community that had the Sacramento River, literally hundreds of yards, if not less, had decided proactively to switch to a land application approach and have constructed wetlands. And they were absolutely beautiful. One of the tours also that occurred was the city of Biggs, our neighbors down the hill. They had a .38 MGD, average dry weather flow. So that's just factoring in, you know, this type of year. What are you getting in July? A lot of communities we talked to had high instances of what's called infiltration and inflow. And that's more associated to older systems with clay pipes that built in there, constructed, you know, 50 years ago, with pipes that are reaching the end of their useful life. And so rain events really affect their INI. But .38 MGD on a dry weather flow basis, a gravity collection system. And they have aerated ponds in a rock filter, really simple operation. They use those for evaporation, to evaporate the treated wastewater. And they switched to a surface discharge with land application due to changing NPDS permits as well. They have a simple operation with only one operator. Disinfection is not required for their land discharge without public access. So they keep it pretty bare bones. And their O&amp;M costs reflect that, which is great. We also made a visit to the Mount Shasta wastewater treatment plant. Their facility size is about .8 MGD, also gravity collection system. They utilize the Aeromod technology that I talked about moments earlier, with an activated sledge, nutrient removal, disk filters, and UV disinfection. It's a, they have a lot of options. I really appreciate the options that the city of Mount Shasta has available to them. They again have the Sacramento River nearby for winter discharges. But they really moved, again, trying to get away from surface water discharges due to permit violations. And so they are looking at recycled water to the neighboring golf course, as well as they have an option for land discharge to a subsurface leach field adjacent to a highway. So they have a redundant system for their treatment process, but a real high-tech new application of their Aeromod treatment, which is great. Let's see, they do have a higher operation staff due to the complexity of the system from our comparison amongst the different technologies we saw. Our next stop was within Nevada County, Lake of the Pines wastewater treatment facility. They had about .3 to .4 MGD. Their collection system is mostly gravity with a few step connections, custom-designed MBR onsite. I believe it was constructed in 2007, '08? Yeah. With UV disinfection. And so it was a little bit new to the MBR, and they're really happy with their system. They have a surface water discharge to a nearby creek. Their facility was upgraded due to changing surface discharge permitting requirements. Their process is more complex, but it allows for more fine-tuned control of the affluent quality into that creek. Okay, then our next stop was with North Auburn, Sanitary Maintenance District 1. This was a facility size of 600 step connections that ties into a gravity system for their regionalization project. If you recall, we did a lot of research looking at regionalization and the efforts made through the Midwestern Plaza Regional Project that connects facilities to the city of Lincoln. And the North Auburn District 1 is part of that system, where they have step connections that feed into Gravity Main that goes to a centralized treatment location. But the purpose for our visit was really to hear from their operators about their experience utilizing step connections. Part of that includes that they shared information that really wasn't aware, that I certainly wasn't aware of previously until this tour took place, about the different kind of challenges and benefits of having property owners being responsible for the physical tanks. But the county was responsible for the O&amp;M of the step pumps themselves. And so there's a lot of different access requirements, a lot of different protocols that have coordination between the county on the private property, maintaining the residence tanks. So that was really enlightening as well. We learned from their perspective that they felt, having experienced with many connections, not just these step connections, that their experience that felt that they require more maintenance than the gravity connections that they're used to, and that their step users pay an additional monthly fee, surcharge on top of their base sewer rate, again, to pay for the cost of that extra effort for that maintenance on the private property. In addition to that information, the step tanks that remain on the property still need to be pumped. The solids still settle, they accumulate, and they have to be pumped, certainly much less frequently than they do today in our current condition here in Paradise. Redundant power supply is also a major concern. Their community, I'm sure, has experienced power outages. PSPSs, we're all familiar with, although those are happening less and less, fortunately for us. But with that in mind, redundant power supply is critical, because if your pump is out of commission, your tank still only has a certain amount of capacity before there's potential for an overflow. Odor complaints, we did hear about odor complaints associated with a step collection system, because there's air relief valves along that collection system, especially with different varying topography, that they even had a location where, at the top of a hill, where cars stage on a traffic signal, that there was a really potent issue with odor complaints from the collection system there. So that was interesting to learn, hearing from them. Our, one of our virtual site tours was just reaching, again, down to our neighbors, trying to understand what works and what's happening nearby. Butte College, they operate their facility 10,000 to 20,000 gallons per day, certainly more seasonal with the student population. But they keep things pretty simple down there as well, with an activated sledge aeration process, as well as a settling clarifier. They have evaporation ponds, and it falls under the state's general order. But again, very basic, relying on our climate to essentially do a lot of the hard work for us. We met with the city of Eureka. Certainly, their facility was much larger than the other facilities we toured, in person and virtually. But they have headworks and screens, primary clarifiers, biotrickling filters. That was one of the main reasons we wanted to reach out to them, is to understand the biotrickling filters and their secondary clarifiers. They have the benefit of a discharge location of the Pacific Ocean. So lots of room for dilution there. But their process was robust, with a few issues with permitting and changing requirements. They're really happy with their system, though, which was great. We met with the city of St. Helena. They're working through a, commissioning a packaged MBR plant. They transitioned away from aerated lagoons to the MBR. They have a river to discharge in the winter, and they use spray irrigation in the summer. So if you see this picture on the right, you see those green circles. That's their just spray irrigation, watering the ground to get rid of that treated wastewater, which is great. Key takeaways, MBR for them has been very modular in operation. Key takeaways, MBR for them has been very modular in operation. The startup has been a little challenging, requiring different tweaks to their chemical addition, but their energy use from what they were doing to what they are doing now is about 20 to 30% more than it used to be, and that's definitely a major concern with MBRs, is not only is it more expensive to operate, but the energy costs are a key reason for that. The community of Robbins in Sutter County, they had about 100 connections that was step only. They had a prefabricated Orenco activated sludge treatment process without evaporation ponds nearby. For them, their step was implemented due to the high groundwater with limited construction depth for gravity, very flat out in the community of Robbins. They take, the county takes responsibility for the O&M of their septic tanks and the step pumps, which was different. The step tanks still need to be pumped every four years on average for them, and the county employs a contract operator for the step collection and treatment system, O&M. The next meeting, and I think the last one I have to share with you, is the Amador County. We learned from them that they have both step and gravity connections. This was actually a contact that PID turned us on to, and that they no longer allow new step connections because of how many challenges that they've had. Step users pay an additional monthly fee for O&M, and county receives about 400 work orders per year for their 500 step units. So definitely something to consider as far as the O&M efforts into operating a step grab, a step system. So with that, at this point, we're going to pause for a moment, and I'm going to turn to Mayor Crowder and Councilmember Lang. I don't know which one of you would like to go first, really just to speak to your experience joining the committee and as well as these tours and vendor meetings and community meetings.
Well, thank you, Mark. Before we get to us, we're going to have Kevin Phillips come up from PID and say a few words, but before you do, Kevin, I know, given what happened last Tuesday at our meeting we had because of conflicts and everything, we had a major shift around. It wasn't a day meeting, it was an evening meeting, emails didn't get out, and you guys kind of at the last minute got notified that it was a six o'clock meeting, and I want to apologize to you and your board because you guys are absolutely a big part of this committee, and I apologize if that happened.
Yep, I accept the apology. First of all, I want to say thank you to the town council, to staff, for allowing us to be part of this process. I'll be honest, I am not an engineer, and I am not a sewer engineer. I like the clean side of things more than the dirty, but I understand this is a necessity to this town for recovery. And so PID is here to be an advisory to the town at this point in time and really be lockstep with this project because without the town recovering as a whole, we don't, none of the organization's recovery as a whole. So I just want to say thank you for taking this on. It's been a huge lift. It's been a lot of frustration that's gone on, not only internally but externally, and I understand. I've been there and done that, so it's not an easy process by any stretch. So I'm here speaking upon, with, well, I'm speaking for PID, which includes Director Mark Solick, who was on the advisory committee or the ad hoc committee, and our president, Bob Matthews, who was on the advisory committee. Mark Solick has 30 years of sewer experience. He was the superintendent of the water treatment plant in Chico, comes with a lot of expertise, and Bob Matthews comes with a real strong financial background. So a real good balance, I feel like, that we brought to this committee. And I'll be honest, I was probably thinking step was the way that we were going to go. And going into this, I had a kind of a preconceived idea, and going with the tours and really talking to a lot of the individuals who deal with this on a daily basis, it kind of switched my mind a little bit. The other thing too is talking with our internal staff about our installations of water lines and of main lines down these streets, the conflicts that are associated with putting a pipe in the ground are real. It's great to have all of our utilities underground with electrical and comms and all of that, but it does create a mess. And when it comes to sewer, you have to have certain distances between freshwater and dirty water. And being that sewer is the last one in the ground, you kind of get the short end of the stick when it comes to that. So looking at that and really trying to understand a lot of the issues associated with that, I've come to the conclusion that I feel like we're on the right path. One of the big key components that PID kind of caveats this project is we want to make sure it's affordable to our community, that it's attainable, that we can actually get this project done, and that it's expandable. And I think this project meets all three of those key components. Is it complete? Are we done? Absolutely not. Are we going to be part of this through this execution of this project? Absolutely. So with that, I will turn it back over to the ad hoc committee, and if there's any questions for me, I'll be here to answer them. I do have to take off because I have another appointment that I got to get to, but I'll try to stick around for about 10 minutes.
Heidi, do you want to go next?
Sure. I wanted to echo the mayor's sentiments that I am very, very grateful for the participation of every member of the ad hoc committee, PID, and HDR, and our staff that have participated. And I'll say upfront that I recognize that I ask a lot of these people. I ask a lot of questions, and I appreciate your support and your patience and your efforts to answer my questions and reassure me so that I can be up here giving my absolute certainty that we are on the right track. I, with regard to reviewing the process that we've gone through, we have absolutely gone to every effort to explore every alternative that has been presented to us and more. We listened to, like Mark kind of summarized, we listened to 11 alternative analysis presentations, going through countless hours of not only sitting in the presentations, but taking those PowerPoint presentations back and sitting for hours reviewing those personally and doing my own research on those alternatives. We went on 10 sewer tours, five in person and five virtual. And I can honestly say I know more now about this industry than I ever cared to, but I knew that this effort was necessary to know what we were doing and what our options were and what would be the best direction to take this community. It's been very helpful and very informative to speak directly to the staff of these facilities that we've toured. You know, you're not just getting the polished presentation where somebody can tell you all the good things about it and how wonderful they smell and how beautiful they look. You're actually going onsite and you're seeing them first in first person. The operators' feedback, I felt, was very transparent and very genuine. You know, they had no ulterior motive but to tell us exactly what they experience on a daily basis, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I would agree with Kevin that honestly, going into this process, I was leaning towards the step system as well. It sounded like I'd hit all the good things. It was quick, it was fast, it was cheap, you know, all of those things. But after hearing the people with the experience and the people with the day-to-day problems that they were having to address as a result of the step system and its variables, I have to, I have to say I have changed my position on it. But that was the point of going to all of these tours and listening to all of these presentations, so that was how, that's the only way we were going to come to this. So anyway, I appreciate everybody coming here tonight to hear this information first person, and with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Heidi. So I'm, my feelings are very similar to Heidi, so I'm not going to go over everything that we've done, but the one thing that got left out here too is we also had bimonthly meetings this entire committee, which was very, very helpful, and we covered everything, the things that we did, the vendors, the different projects. We had a trip to DC, which where we were looking for funding. The countless hours that everybody, staff, and everyone put in on just this is just kind of mind blowing. It was amazing. And it's, I honestly feel that we can, you know, move forward with this knowing that we're making the right choices and that we were fully informed with all the information that, you know, that we had. So with that, I'm done, but before I turn it back to Mark, is any of the council have any questions for Kevin since?
I just want to say that from what information I've gathered throughout this process, and I've been involved with the sewer my first 12 years on the council back in the early 2008 and those years, I really appreciate the product the work did, but, and I was really appreciative of the fact that you said that you and your board are at least hopeful that what you're looking at now answers the main questions you have, affordability for our ratepayers, our customers, and the fact that we can actually get this thing put in the ground. Being partners with PID to do this, because as you're going to see in the next parts of the presentation, what the estimated costs are, what we're being shown is worst-case scenarios with the funding that we have available, but, and a lot of that takes into account when you do a public project, you have to do prevailing wage, and you have to do all kinds of things that are necessary. If we, moving forward, if everything lines up and all the stars align, and work as a partnership with PID, they have the expertise, they have the licenses to go into the streets and dig them up and put pipes in, they have people on staff that have permits to do wastewater treatment, although they would have to get different certification to operate this plant. We avoid a lot of those things. They have staff, they have, you know, so there's some real advantages down the road to this being a partnership deal, the Town of Paradise and Paradise Irrigation District, as far as making this thing happen, making it affordable, and making it sustainable. And I appreciate your support thus far, and I hope that everything, all the stars line up and that that partnership happens.
Thank you, Kevin. So with that, we'll turn it back to Mark.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Crowder. I'm actually going to turn it over to Allison McReynolds for the next portion of the presentation was to really dive in. Get ready, buckle up. I'm so excited to hear Allison share this really great information, getting into the details about the summary of the alternatives analysis. Allison.
Thank you, Mark. As Mark mentioned, I'm going to be presenting what we'll say is a summary of the alternatives analysis that the team's been working on over the past six months, and what was presented to the ad hoc committee over the past month or so through a series of workshops. So it's the summation of all of the activities that Mark went through on that flow chart over the past few months, including interviews with operators, interviews with vendors, community members, as well as industry experts and internal expertise, hydraulic modeling efforts, as you'll see, and just our own staff's experience. So to start off, it's important to note that for a complete sewer wastewater management project, it includes three components. First, the collection of wastewater from individual parcels. Second, treatment at, you know, potentially a centralized treatment location, and then finally dispersal or disposal of that treated wastewater. Has to go somewhere once you treat it. Within each of those three steps, there are several alternatives that you can pursue. So in the collection system, you can, there are many types of collection systems, really comes down to a gravity system, which is the most common in the United States and probably around the world. There's also a step or low-pressure system, and then a third option is a hybrid, like we'd heard a few partner agencies talk about having some step and some gravity in their collection systems. Within a wastewater treatment process, there are many, many different technologies, but typically can be boiled down to a few categories, from simplest to most complex, at a lagoon or an aerated lagoon pond system, fixed growth, suspended growth, or what's called a membrane bioreactor or MBR. And then on disposal, what can you do with wastewater once it's been treated? You can discharge that to a surface water, to a land application, or to a reuse purpose. So I'm going to walk through kind of the alternatives in a little bit more detail for each of these three stages of wastewater management. So to start off, within the types of collection systems, as I mentioned, kind of the three general options are a gravity step or low-pressure system, and then a hybrid system. In a typical gravity sewer, those pipelines are installed at a constant slope in order to maintain a minimum velocity of that wastewater flowing within the pipe. You use manholes to change direction as well as maintenance, and then lift stations or pump stations are what you use to change the elevation within that gravity collection system. A step sewer, by contrast, has individual onsite systems at each property. So an onsite septic tank with the liquid effluent from that tank is pumped with a small pump in the tank into a low-pressure pipeline that then conveys that wastewater from the property to a central treatment location. Some other assets Mark mentioned that we talked to some agencies about that are within their systems as well are air release valves, especially each of the high points, to kind of relieve pressure and relieve, release air, entrained air in those systems that can be a source of odor, excuse me, and then also isolation valves at regular intervals in order to perform maintenance. Since that system is under pressure, you do need to isolate portions with valving in order to perform maintenance. So tonight, we're also going to be talking about a hybrid between these two alternatives, in which you would have primarily gravity trunk mains down your primary corridors, but you could have low-elevation individual properties or low-elevation regions or neighborhoods connected to those gravity trunk lines with individual step systems at each property. This should result in shallower gravity trunk mains than with a pure gravity system. So to start, this is a model, I know the font is a little small, I apologize, but the graphic that you're looking at on the right is a graphic of the hydraulic model of the original sewer service area under a gravity condition. So under a gravity, the original design, if you will, that was presented in the Basis of Design Report back in January. So with this, there were about 30 pump stations, a little over 30, I believe, but it's important to note that of those pump stations that were included in that gravity system, only about four of them were over 100 gallons per minute and were considered major pump stations. The rest were fairly small pump stations, small grinder pumps that were really there to service those low-lying areas, those low-lying neighborhoods, in order to convey wastewater from, you know, an individual street or individual neighborhood up into the gravity trunk mains that were running along Skyway and Clark and Pearson. By contrast, step pumps that are at individual properties, those are typically about 5 to 10 gallons per minute, so yes, they are smaller, but we're kind of in the range. This next one here, similar graphic, we asked our hydraulic modeling team to take a look at that hydraulic model that was developed for the full gravity system and examine what that system, that network of pipes would look like under a low-pressure system scenario. So they really kind of, early on in the process, discovered that with the topography in town, you are on a pretty steep incline from the top of the sewer service area to the bottom of the sewer service area, so kind of the top of Skyway down to the town limits at the bottom of Skyway, is a pretty large elevation difference of over 800 feet. And when you do run a pressurized system, any kind of pressurized pipe, that pipe is, that means it's flowing full, that it's full of water at all times. That's the way that they're designed. And so when you have a full pipe, that water column stacked up over 100, or, excuse me, 800 feet, causes a lot of pressure down at the lower zones, that the weight of all of that column of water on the bottom causes quite a bit of pressure, what we call hydraulic head or static head. So when they examined this system and the elevation differences in town, they discovered that with the full build-out system that the town does want to eventually achieve, having that system be a low-pressure system where those pipes are flowing full would result in pressures at the lower ends of that zone, where you would probably be, somewhere in the lower zone is where you would like to locate a wastewater treatment plant ideally, that would be over 350 PSI or pounds per square inch. Taking a look at some of the design manuals of step system vendors, their highest head pumps that they deliver for step system applications really max out at 100 PSI. So I know this is a lot of technical stuff, but essentially it means that at a full build-out scenario where the entire sewer service area was built and serviced, it would mean that your lower elevation zone users with a typical step pump would not be able to pump their sewage into that pressurized sewage line. Those pumps would not work. You need to have at least as much or greater pressure or head from the pumps as your pressure in your pipeline. So they concluded, we really concluded that a purely low-pressure system that was pressurized throughout would not work, would not be feasible for full system build-out. So if there's a few other differences I just wanted to highlight between kind of a traditional gravity system, a full gravity system, and a purely step system in terms of implementation. So first, yes, there are cost differences between a full gravity system and a full step system. Those cost differences are usually about 30% greater for initial construction costs for a full gravity system than for a step system, usually due to deeper trenching that's often required. As far as the constructability, open trench construction is recommended for the Town of Paradise for either a step system or for, or the gravity system, excuse me. That's really due to, you can directionally drill for smaller pipelines, but it's really not recommended for areas that are very cobaly, very rocky. We've heard plenty from contractors that are doing lots of work in town about the challenges with the rocks and the cobbles in town in this current geology. So it's not a recommended method for probably most of town. As mentioned, I think Kevin mentioned, the... As mentioned, I think Kevin mentioned, the sewer pipelines do need to be installed at a lower elevation than all of the other utilities, that is California code. And then in terms of operation, Mark mentioned some of the challenges that we heard from our, our partner agencies about the step system. Okay. All right. Give me a thumbs up when it's back on. Thank you. Sorry about that, folks. But yes, we will need to maintain a minimum velocity in order to prevent solids from building up within those pipes. There are strategies to mitigate that with your operation and maintenance, such as a flushing program, periodically just flushing those pipes to clear any blockages. So Mark went over a lot of this information already with the, the feedback that we heard from the agencies that are currently operating either fully step or partially step systems, with some of the, the issues and challenges that they have seen with step system operation. So many of those agencies reported that if they do have both step users and gravity users, they're seeing more operation and maintenance issues for their step users than they are for the gravity portions of that pipeline. And one of the ways that they have mitigated that for their own costs is to implement additional fees on top of the base sewer rate for the step users in order to cover their operation and maintenance costs for those. I mean, essentially, you have more pumps, because every, every property has a pump, and it's just more operation and maintenance, more points of failure, more assets to maintain. They did say that, you know, typically the cost for new systems would be on the builders themselves, rather on the town as new connections, once the system is in place, was laid out. Mark touched on the power safety shut-offs, they kind of said it in the terms of, you know, if you have a power safety shut-off or loss of power at all, your water keeps flowing, but your sewer doesn't. Your sewer at your home does not continue to flow, whereas in a gravity system, it just keeps going. Gravity doesn't rely on power. They, they reported that in their experience maintaining step systems over several decades in many cases, they saw that they did work very well very shortly after those were constructed. But as the system ages, they saw more and more issues, and especially when a system was constructed all at once, it tended to age at the same rate, and they saw kind of peaks in failures at the same rate throughout their talent, and it caused kind of surges for them in their operation and maintenance. As far as treatment, between a step system or a step-only system and, oh, we lost our YouTube. Do we need to pause?
I'd like to check. If you don't mind. I just want to acknowledge that we lost internet in the building, it looks like, which means the YouTube feed for the recording of this meeting is down at the moment. So I don't know if we want to pause for like three minutes and figure out. Oh, we're getting a thumbs up? We're back? Okay. Okay. Thank you for your patience. This is critical. Okay, there we are. We're back. Okay, Clint, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Welcome back. Thank you again. So sorry about that.
Thanks.
All right, sorry, folks, but thank you. All right, so coming, jumping right back in here, as far as treatment, and what treatment requirements would be required, or what treatment processes and steps would be required for a step system, septic tank effluent only versus a gravity system, which we call typical domestic wastewater. Both, I will say, this is by the Water Board about what they see as typical constituents within either typical domestic wastewater or septic tank effluent. The septic tank effluent or a step system would provide a lower-strength wastewater, less carbon, less solids than typical domestic. However, both are still in need of treatment in order to achieve the standards that are highlighted here in orange, which is what the Water Board would require for any type of discharge method at minimum. So I will say, any, any type of collection system will still need secondary treatment at minimum for any discharge method. Typically, in a larger system, you may be able to eliminate primary clarification if you did have a septic tank effluent only, a step-only system, because a lot of the solids are settling out in those step tanks. However, the system size that we're looking at here for Paradise, especially in a Phase One system, is small enough that typically those facilities don't need primary clarifiers at all. And so that we, is something that we saw both at Rio Alto and the City of Biggs. They were able to treat their wastewater just fine with just a simple headworks and not need an additional primary clarifier, where you kind of get that additional solid settling. And also that solids management strategy is going to be needed for any system, because part of the way that wastewater is treated is through a biological process. That biology grows, it accumulates in your system, and needs to be pulled out and managed in some way over time. So with all of that in mind, we wanted to try to find a way to maximize the benefits of both a gravity system and a step system. And so the concept that we're bringing forward tonight, and brought forward to the ad hoc committee previously, is a hybrid between a gravity and step sewer. So in this hybrid system for the Town of Paradise, the vision would be that we would have gravity trunk mains along the Skyway and Clark and Pearson corridors, as well as any other major hydraulic corridors in the final design, with the low-lying areas or low-lying individual properties that could be connected to those gravity trunk mains via individual onsite step systems. So we believe this is the most compatible solution for Paradise. It's able to take advantage of the fact that you are on a steep gradient in order to use gravity for gravity's sake to convey as much of that wastewater as possible down the hill to a treatment location, while also understanding and mitigating the topography within town that is challenging at times with a pure gravity system. In this system, owners of current septic tanks could retrofit their tanks in order to put a pump in there, as long as those tanks were deemed in good, good enough condition, those could be retrofitted to be a step process. And then this replaces the small grinder pump stations with regions connected via steps. So the diagram here on the right is that same diagram you saw earlier of the hydraulic model of the full gravity collection system, and all of the little triangles that you may or may not be able to see, these little triangles here circled in red are all of the small pump stations that could potentially be replaced and removed from the design and replaced instead with individual step onsite systems. This would allow the main trunk lines along those primary hydraulic corridors to be installed at shallower depths, to not have to meet the lowest possible user. And by our first analysis here, we, we think that in a Phase One project that prioritizes really serving that downtown area, we may not need any central lift stations at all. It would remove all central lift stations, or could remove all central lift stations from a Phase One project. So to kind of explain a little further, what does this mean? How does this hybrid any different from gravity or any different from step? We've got a few diagrams here. So this is a diagram showing what a pure gravity system would look like in a community where you have some topographic differences, you have some high-elevation homes and businesses, some that are lower, some that are higher and lower, even with on the same street. So in a gravity design, you would have to install your gravity trunk mains, your gravity lines, at a low enough elevation that it can capture by gravity the flow coming out of your lowest house, your lowest business. So if you have homes on the lower side of the street, you would need to install your trunk lines low enough, deep enough in the ground to be able to capture the wastewater coming out of even those businesses. In this hybrid system that we're proposing, the trunk mains that we'd be installing, these gravity trunk mains, would be installed at a shallower depth, because those lower-elevation users, could be even on just one side of the street, could instead connect via a low-pressure system, a pump in their septic tank to pump that, their wastewater effluent into the gravity trunk mains. There would still be zones within this system where either those homes or businesses on both sides of the street are at a good elevation where they could connect via gravity into the shallower trunk main, they could do that. Or if a property owner chooses to raise their finished floor elevation in, in order to meet the minimum elevation needs, if they're on a lower property, they could choose to do that and then connect via gravity. And then there also would be some neighborhoods, some zones, that are low-lying in and of themselves. And in those zones, in those neighborhoods, on those streets, those would be a step system kind of in and of themselves, where your, your trunk mains, your sewer trunks are pressurized, those are low-pressure zones. And so each of the homes and businesses in that pressure zone would be connecting via a septic tank pump into that low-pressure main, and then that pressure would be used to convey the wastewater into the gravity trunk mains that are along your primary corridors. Another note, just with these diagrams here, you can see that each of the alternatives does have some constraints on the depths of, of those pipe installations. It's really driven by the existing utilities in the ground, the, the water lines, the electric cable, gas, all, all of the utilities that are already there that we've heard even from PID, can be challenging to navigate against.
Yeah, I was just going to add here a moment and go back a slide even or two, and really want to thank, again, the community for bringing this forward, because what we're able to present here is a solution that takes, again, the best of what step has to offer to leverage the most affordable project. As Allison was just saying, the depth of the main is really the key driver to the cost of that excavation. So what that means is that the main needs to be set underneath the conflicts. You heard earlier from Kevin, from PID, as well as other utility owners will, will agree, those utilities are installed at certain depths and the sewer has to go underneath. There's no room for us to go over, nor could we. So with that, with this approach allowing a hybrid, which, again, takes the best of step and applies it here to this project, and relies on gravity mains, where the, the depth of that main is an engineering decision that's really as shallow as possible underneath the utilities. And so whether we were doing step only for that main or gravity, that main is going to be about the same elevation right underneath those utilities. And what this graphic shows is that if we set the main as shallow as possible, that's going to dictate whether that connection is going to be a step connection or a gravity connection. And so for some areas in town, it's going to be super easy, they'll all be gravity, and that's great, because gravity is free. So otherwise, if you're in a low-line neighborhood, you'll see both of them would be purple and be step connections, and that main would actually be a step main into the gravity main that gets to the treatment location. So I just really am grateful for the input and expertise that was brought forward about step, to get us one-third of the way there, to get a collection system really optimized. And from here forward, we'll be looking and talking about treatment and dispersal.
Thanks, Mark. So kind of to conclude the, the collection system section, after presenting, you know, the information that we've just presented to you here to the ad hoc committee, the recommendation for further consideration for alternatives was to pursue a hybrid gravity and step collection system, with that collection system representing a gravity trunk mains down Skyway, Clark Road, and any other hydraulic mainline corridors. That maintains the flexibility for low-elevation areas and properties to connect via individual onsite step units at each, at each site. Those gravity trunks would be set at higher elevations than previous gravity systems, as Mark just mentioned, with considering utilities. This does incorporate the benefits of step while maintaining the scalability for future system expansion, so still being able to envision a system that serves the original sewer service area that this project initially set out to do. And that, that Phase One project that would prioritize the downtown may not even require any central lift stations at all. So I know that was a lot. We'll move on to wastewater treatment. So again, wastewater treatment, kind of, can, there's many, many technologies out there, many specific methods, but they can be kind of boiled down into four high-level categories of types of wastewater treatment. The first and most simple being an aerated or non-aerated lagoon or pond system, like the City of Biggs had. Fixed growth, which is where the biology I described earlier grows on some type of media, that is similar to a trickling filter. Suspended growth, which is also called activated sludge, where that biology grows floating in the water, floating in suspension. So that's similar to the aeromod system that we saw at Mount Shasta, as well as what's called an oxidation ditch that we saw at Rio Alto. And then a membrane bioreactor, which is just something that's a little more complex than an activated sludge system. It tries to really optimize space and uses filters to separate some of the solids from the, membrane filters to separate the solids from the water. In high-level summary here, why would you choose one technology over another? They all have advantages and disadvantages. But generally speaking, it comes down to complexity, footprint, operational cost. So some of the general metrics, so why you would choose some of these technologies over another, again, a range from kind of simplest to most complex, we have an aerated pond, trickling filter, activated sludge, and then NBR. Simplest usually means cheapest, I'll say, least expensive. So in both capital cost and operating cost, a pond system is going to be less expensive than an activated sludge system, and with an NBR being your most expensive to both construct and to then operate. Scalability, NBRs, as Mark kind of described, some of those little package plants, they're very scalable, you can kind of just drop more trailers onsite, they can be very small, they maximize footprint. But any of the other systems could also be scaled up or down with different methodologies, whether that's building more assets or just using baffles in between. Footprint, again, your aerated ponds are going to be the largest footprint, with an NBR being the smallest. Wastewater effluent treated quality, which we're calling here kind of readiness for reuse or for a surface water discharge application. You do get a higher-quality effluent from an NBR, it produces what's called tertiary treated water, whereas the other three produce secondary treated water. So your, your water quality is higher from NBR, you're a little bit more ready for more applications of reuse. And then operational complexity, again, simplest as a pond, most complex as an NBR. And energy use, similarly, those pond systems are fairly passive, whereas an NBR requires quite a bit of air in order, and which is, equates to energy to operate. So from kind of that, as well as some more detailed information in all of our site tours, the recommendation from the ad hoc committee for further analysis was to kind of continue analysis on two alternatives, the first being an aerated pond system, because it is the most cost-effective for both capital and O&amp;M, simplest in operation, it is not as sensitive to smaller flows or inconsistent flows, which we expect to, to experience at startup. It does have the largest footprint, but those ponds could be repurposed easily if you did scale up or change to a more complex technology down the road. And that could, you know, that with secondary treated water, could potentially produce some reused water for low-impact agricultural purposes. The other alternative that they asked us to continue to pursue and investigate was the NBR. It is the highest capital cost and highest O&amp;M cost alternative. However, it can be constructed fairly quickly, that because they come in these small packaged systems, they're pre-engineered, pre-designed, prefabricated, can kind of just be delivered to the site, already ready to go. It's very simple, for installation at least. Future-proof, it does produce that higher-quality effluent, so it does have a lot of flexibility for future uses, whether that's to a surface discharge or to reuse. And then again, the smallest footprint, since we are somewhat constrained in the available properties in town. It can also, because of that small footprint, be aesthetically hidden, I'll say, inside of structures or subsurface, as you'll see in a bit. So here's just kind of some example layouts of, with those technologies in mind, what would a facility potentially look like for a Phase One project that would serve, you know, kind of a priority downtown area? This is an example of what a pond system, treatment system, we think could look like. So it does include a series of treatment ponds that would each be kind of performing a different stage of treatment, as well as some other assets, including headworks, a pump station, solids management, and some administration buildings, and maintenance and storage. You see on the right there, next section, we'll talk about discharge, but it does include a footprint for a land discharge pond, in total needing about 17 acres. In contrast, that membrane bioreactor, the NBR, much smaller. So those, does include the NBR slab itself, as well as kind of some room, leaving some room for future expansion, with the addition of additional, the addition of future units. But does also include, again, the solids management systems, headworks, maintenance and storage, administration buildings, et cetera. And another key is an influence storage pond to make sure to manage, it's a little more sensitive to process upsets in a pond, so you'd need something to kind of be able to mitigate changes. All told, about 12 acres is what we estimate would be needed for this type of system for Paradise. So as I kind of promised, those NBR systems, because they are so small, they kind of come prefabricated, one advantage that they do have is that they could be hidden aesthetically inside of buildings or structures, they could be buried subsurface. So here's just kind of some renderings of one example project that each terrace worked on, that was able to hide some, a whole wastewater treatment plant inside of a barn that was designed to look just like a lot of the architecture around the neighborhood. So there's a lot of options there. All right, discharge. So the last step in the process, what do you do with your wastewater once you've treated it? There are kind of three general options. What you can do with it is a surface discharge to a creek, to a river, to a lake. What you can do with it is a surface discharge to a creek, to a river, to a lake, land discharge, so to a discharged pond or wetland, or to some non-edible, non-food crop irrigation, or to beneficial reuse, also called purple pipe, the Title 22 water, reuse water that's often used for irrigation purposes, landscapes, golf courses, but could also be used for fire suppression or crops. For surface discharge, I want to thank the Water Board for their input. We consulted with them several times over the past several months to get their input on what a surface water discharge permitting process would look like and the requirements related to that. In their opinion, they believe that all of the options for a surface discharge into creeks and rivers near town would require a very high level of treatment called tertiary treatment. They also emphasized to us that the permitting process itself is quite challenging, could be very long, would require multiple studies on both the effluent, that's what's coming out of your treatment plant, as well as studies of the creeks and rivers you'd be discharging into to ensure that you're not degrading the water quality. And that that permit cycle for renewal is quite short and that the permit conditions can change every five years, which can have very heavy impacts to your treatment plant itself. We heard that anecdotally from many of the partner agencies that we went and visited, that that was a big challenge they had. And when they aren't able to meet their permits, the Water Board wanted, made sure to let us know that there would be mandatory penalties. So this is another cost that the town would be incurring if for any violation, thousands of dollars, these can add up very quickly and can be very difficult and challenging. So overall, the Water Board strongly recommended avoiding a surface water discharge for a Phase One project. For beneficial reuse, it's important to note that any type of of a collection system could produce reuse quality water. What the quality, water quality standards you need to achieve really depend on what you're trying to do with your reuse water. But both a STEP collection system with septic tank effluent as well as a traditional gravity system that receives typical domestic wastewater can both achieve reuse purposes with the right treatment process. So we heard from some agencies that do operate multiple types of discharge, that they actually found their Title 22 reuse users and then those requirements easier to meet than surface water discharge. But any type of reuse project is going to include more costs to the project due to just increased infrastructure that would need to be built, but it can always be included in a future phase of the project. The Water Board made sure to emphasize as well that anything we choose now does not preclude doing something different in the future. There are some additional challenges to implementing reuse. First off, the need to identify high volume users. So the folks that we talked to that did use reuse, some of their advantages, that they had a golf course next door that was taking all of their water, which is not the case here in Paradise. So it reduced to identify high volume users like a golf course, like parks, like an agricultural user, that would reduce your distribution infrastructure as well as the administrative costs with fewer customers, fewer users to manage. Another challenge that we see with many utilities around the state, especially in California with our climate, is that the demand for reuse water really varies seasonally. In the summertime, everybody wants it to irrigate their land, to irrigate their crops, to irrigate their landscaping, but in the wintertime, they don't have the same type of irrigation demands. That's also when your wastewater treatment plant usually has its highest incoming flows. So you kind of have a problem of having more flow at your treatment plant while your demand is lower for your reuse users. That means that, I mean, every reuse user that I've worked with has an alternate method of discharging that they have to use in the wintertime and otherwise they have very large storage needs to be able to store that treated effluent. Again, it would require additional distribution infrastructure, piping, pumping, pumping anything, you know, uphill, which is added capital and maintenance cost. And that discharge, or excuse me, the reuse water does also need to maintain a certain separation from raw wastewater. So those pipes, your incoming effluent collection system pipes would need to maintain a separation from your reuse pipes as well. So it'd be additional construction. So at the end of that, the recommendation from the ad hoc committee was to consider reuse in future project phases. I think everybody agrees that reuse is a great goal and a great value to have as a community, but since the project is currently constrained with budget and with time, we want to maintain that value for the future, but it should be considered in future project phases as more funding is becomes available and as potential new customers are identified. So the last option for your treated effluent, what do you do with it, is land discharge. So this can be in the form of ponds or in irrigation, like a spray irrigation field to some non-edible crops. The permit cycle for this is much longer, about 10 years. And, you know, talking with the Water Board, they really emphasize that it's a much easier permit limits to achieve and a much longer permit cycle, which makes the administration burden much less compared to a surface discharge permit. It does typically include just some quarterly sampling requirements. Between the two options here, the suboptions of discharge pond versus an irrigation field, the main difference is again, land usage. So much higher land needs needed for spray irrigation or some kind of partnership with a local farm compared to a discharge pond. And again, that irrigation could be seasonally limited by Water Board rules, so you would still need a storage reservoir. So with all of that, the recommendation from the ad hoc committee was for further analysis was to pursue land discharge with a percolation evaporation pond. So thank you for sticking with me. That's been a lot. I recognize it's a lot of technical information, so thanks for sticking around so far. This brings us to the three alternatives that were recommended by the ad hoc committee for further evaluation for refined cost estimates and kind of a vision of what a Phase One project could look like with these three alternatives. The three alternatives being, for each alternative, a hybrid gravity and STEP system collection system. Alternative one, followed by an aerated lagoon and then a land discharge to a pond. Alternative two being that hybrid collection system followed by an MBR and then discharge via a land application to a pond. And then the third alternative as a hybrid system followed by an MBR treatment and then discharge to a surface water, really as a point of comparison to understand what the difference would be if we did choose a higher quality, more complex treatment technology to try to go straight to a surface discharge. The image you're seeing on the right is a conceptual only. This is not a final service area. Nothing has been decided or approved by town staff or council as far as a service area. But this conceptual service area on the right, so it's really taking a look at how can we maximize service to the priority areas within the town of Paradise. So that priority area really being to serve the downtown where we know that rebuilds has been lagging and economic growth has been lagging, to serve that priority area from Pearson to Elliott and then Skyway over to Black Olive and kind of that historic downtown area as well as the area in South Skyway, which if we are, you know, building along a hydraulic corridor, we want to tie in as many users as we can along the way. So with that vision of what a Phase One project could look like, that would serve up to 225 parcels in a Phase One. However, only about 83 of those are currently occupied by standing structures, businesses, and homes. We did an analysis walking all of that site and looking at topographic maps and survey data to understand which of those parcels could be served by a gravity collection or a gravity laterals versus individual STEP systems. And that would be in total about 88 STEP users at a full buildout of those 225 parcels. The system would be sized for that 100,000 gallons per day with that many users at a full buildout, but we'd be looking at probably a startup flow closer to 40,000 gallons per day just based on the standing structures and businesses that are currently there. With this reduced SSA for a Phase One, again, we expect that no central lift stations would be necessary within that particular boundary. And again, the the gravity main, the goal for this project is that the gravity mains along the primary corridors would be installed at nearly the same depth as a low pressure system or a STEP system. So as far as costs, the scope of the project that we've described with those three alternatives for serving a 100,000 gallons per day at full buildout and that particular service area for costing purposes only comes out to, you know, the the figures that are here on your screen. At high level, these are total project costs, so it includes your design as well as your construction, right of way acquisition, environmental clearances, as well as your services during construction, your construction management, and the town's costs and administration costs and overhead costs. So in total, those costs for alternative one, we anticipate would be around $114 million. For alternative two, which is your MBR to a percolation pond, would be $128 million. And alternative three, which is an MBR to surface water discharge at $122 million. Oh, I too, that the costs for the construction elements of this estimate were really built from the ground up, looking at every linear foot of pipeline that we expect, every lateral that we expect to install, every pump, every cubic foot of concrete in the treatment plant was estimated for a facility of this size and includes all of the adders that you may not always see in a construction estimate that includes profit to the contractor, bonds, insurance, contingency for the town, the things that, you know, some of your vendors might not tell you upfront, but we know as, and with our experiences being an engineering company and doing construction estimates, you need to make sure you include so that you have an accurate construction total. And that this estimate, I just want to say, conforms to the AACE guidelines for a Class Five cost estimate, which is a conceptual cost estimate. There are a few disclaimers I just want to make note of before we get too tied to these numbers. There are some exclusions to these costs. So first off, that the STEP pumps and lateral connections that were included in these costs, we did include the costs for existing structures and existing properties, but not for vacant properties. There are costs included for lateral stub outs to all of those properties, but nothing on property. The MBR costs that are quoted there do not include those very pretty aesthetic improvements that I showed earlier where it's hidden in a barn or where it's buried below the surface. That would be an added cost. The capital costs that are here don't necessarily reflect the cost of operation or any of the startup costs like the purchase of equipment or the purchase of trucks, anything the town would need to continue operating and maintaining the system themselves. But the right of way costs do include acquisition of enough property to be able to expand the system in the future. So not just kneecapping the town at purchasing only enough land to serve only that downtown property, but enough land to be able to serve the town into the future as the system continues to grow. And again, the the costs here consider the production rates, expert input from contractors who've studied the town or worked in the town, prevailing wage requirements, as well as industry standards and contingencies. As far as operational costs, again, and there's some nuances here too. The membrane bioreactor is a more complex operation. It's more expensive to operate and maintain, higher experience is needed, and could have complexities with receiving chemical addition. And then as we've heard from the Water Board, the surface discharge is challenging to operate and maintain. It can be expensive because of fines, because of the operation and maintenance programs that are required in order to maintain permit compliance. So for some example operating costs, I should do this one. For example, we wanted to get some feedback from some of the partner agencies who we talked to who are operating similar systems of somewhat similar size to what Paradise is currently considering operating. So these are four examples, City of Biggs, Rio Alto, both have fairly simple treatment plants with aerated lagoons and oxidation ditches, also smaller communities. And then Lake of the Pines and St. Helena, excuse me, are operating those more complex membrane bioreactors. Caveat, those are slightly larger systems as well. So as you can see, kind of the simpler systems are less expensive to operate and some of their user rates.
Thank you, Allison. I'll take it from here. So I did want to take a moment while we're talking about operations and maintenance to remind the community that back in August of 2023, Paradise Town Council conceptually approved a rate subsidy plan. And I bring this up because while the project is important now, we want it as quickly as possible, affordability is absolutely paramount. So the previous version of the project, we took formal action to make sure that in the lens of campfire recovery with a population that is growing but needs this project to grow further and reach a community that has essential services and all the benefits and affordable housing and restaurants that can have more seats in their, in their building, we need the sewer. So with that in mind, affordability though is still a major factor. So back in August of 2023, a rate study was adopted that would establish potential rates near about $85 a month, targeting what was shared with us through the USDA program that helps with grants and loans, that really says about, for communities like us, that 2% of the MHI, median household income, is about standard and a good target to set for what rates should be. We've seen rates really range across the sites that we visited and we heard one real common theme, that they haven't updated them properly in many years and that a lot of communities are subsidizing their operations just to break even for what it takes to treat their wastewater. So with that in mind, the town adopted a plan, what we called O and M Financing Assistance, which is the goal to make sure that this project is affordable for the community. With that, we established an operating reserve of $1.2 million and committed $526,000 annually for the first 10 years of the utility's operation. Now, at that point, we were really forecasting that the project would stimulate the growth and more growth means more ratepayers and more ratepayers means that less assistance is required. So with that in mind, the total commitment was estimated at that time to be $6.4 million and the source of those funds being the town's Paradise Recovery and Operations Pro Fund Project Reserves, set aside completely for projects like this that are instrumental in the town's recovery. With that, while this project has evolved and we certainly have a smaller area, that can also mean less assistance, especially if we look at an affordable approach to this project. So I will advise here that a rate subsidy will need to be reviewed in the lens of this revised project scale and project costs, but it will be part of the larger rate setting requirements. But if we can assume, and I'll ultimately leave that to the council and the community to decide, that subsidizing these rates to ensure affordability to deliver a project now is still a priority and can be achieved, that achieves the goal of this community and this project. So with that, we're winding down the presentation. With, I will turn it over to, again, the mayor to really go through the ultimate recommendation you saw in the agenda summary and the presentation here this evening. We've had three shortlist alternatives, but there is a clear recommendation. And so with that, I'll pass it over to Mayor Crowder.
Thank you, Mark. Again, we'll start with Heidi.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's patience in going through all this information. It's a lot to digest. It's, it's been overwhelming for me over the last few months and I can't imagine taking this all in in one evening. So as a member of the ad hoc committee, I want to start with that this is a very, very critical project to me. As a resident of Paradise and, you know, I don't plan on going anywhere ever, I want to see this community succeed. And I feel that completing at least Phase One of a wastewater treatment is absolutely imperative to stimulate economic growth and to help us get back on track and become solvent and to be able to sustain our community for the long haul. And so with that lens and the priorities that we identified to be able to deliver a wastewater treatment solution for our community that is affordable and scalable because I am confident that this will, will stimulate significant growth. I don't have a crystal ball, but I absolutely am confident that that will happen. It has, it has caused me to pause and look at this through the lens of need versus want. If we were talking about what I want, I would love to see us have the high end system that future proves us for the foreseeable future, that would put us in a position to have beneficial reuse and water reclamation as an option for discharge immediately without any, you know, additional treatment necessary that would be scalable and that would be, that would be really like a fancy high end. would be really like a fancy high end system. But we're not talking about want. We're talking about what we need and what is realistically deliverable for our community. And we're, we're on a time crunch, not only for the expiration of a significant portion of our funding, but if we don't get this, if we don't start breaking ground and get this moving, you know, even if we broke ground tomorrow, we're going to be talking about a couple of years of construction, then the economic development response to that, those people going through the permitting, construction, get on their feet as a business, start generating revenue and start closing our gap of our, our financial deficit. So we're talking years down the road. And we all know how quick the last almost seven years went by. So we are running out of time. So ultimately, we're looking at a need. And what we need is a deliverable, affordable, scalable system. And with that being said, the, the only option that we have to fulfill all of those criteria is the alternative one, the hybrid gravity step collection system with air rated lagoon treatment and land discharge to percolation and evaporation ponds. This, this will get us on our feet. This will get us credibility for being able to deliver. I can speak to personal experience from having spoken to multiple agencies when we went to DC to advocate for funding for this project, that that is a big, that is a big variable. How is this project this round different from the last 45 plus years that we've been trying? We have, we don't have the reputation for being able to deliver this, to say the least. We need to be able to deliver phase one, regain some credibility, get on our feet, stimulate that growth, get the people, get the money and keep moving forward. You know, this is just the beginning. This is just getting our feet under us and getting us the tools that we need to, to move And I know, you know, based on the, the funding summary that Mark outlined, we do have secured a substantial portion of the funds necessary to deliver this project, alternative one, but there is still a funding gap there. And we're, I know staff is constantly pursuing additional funding opportunities, but I would also like to emphasize that I believe if we don't find that money tree, that we need to consider diverting additional CDBGDR funding from other projects that we currently have on our to do list to make this happen. If we don't get this project delivered, we're not going to need a lot of those other projects because we won't have the population growth or the ability to sustain ourselves and become solvent to even worry about those projects. So that is my recommendation. Thank you.
Well, I probably got a couple of things that are going to match exactly what Heidi said, but it's a disadvantage of going second. So this process actually started back in 1969, so it's been 56 years. So it is time that we can deliver a project and we have to do that. Kind of like Heidi, my first choice would be the MBR system and with the recycled water and everything, but we, we can't afford it right now. So the hybrid gravity step is, is the one that we need to go with. You know, yeah, we'd like to have a Cadillac, but we can afford a Chevy and it'll still deliver us from point A to point B. And it is deliverable. It is, it is. We can, we're, oh, sorry. It's deliverable, it's fundable, it's scalable and it's permissible. It's, it can be done in a relatively short timeframe, which I think Mark will cover next. And as, as we expand this system from time, we could expand to an MBR system and nothing we've done at this point will be wasted. We can still use the ponds. So every, every other system that we looked at had a source of backup. So this could be our backup system. And I know it's late, so I'm going to turn it back to Mark and let him finish the project forecast and then we'll go to public. Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Crowder. Real quick, we actually do have Clint Snyder representing the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board here with us this evening. He could make it virtually. So grateful, Clint. I understand you had some comments participating in a lot of the project history, but especially in the last few months with the ad hoc committee as well. So Clint, thank you. If you had anything to add here at the end for the community, that'd be great.
Yeah, just first, I want to applaud both you and Allison on the presentation. That was an absolute mouthful, but just an amazing presentation. So thanks for cramming all of that information into the public. Also, I want to thank the elected officials, employees and contractors and consultants that have worked on this project over the last seven years, particularly the last few months. It's been a tremendous amount of effort put into analyzing the different options that are available to the town, the pros and cons, O and M costs and everything else. So thank you for all, all your efforts on that. I won't belabor the point too much, but certainly support wholeheartedly the recommendation being made by mayor and vice mayor today. I think simpler is better in this particular instance and it'll serve as a solid foundation moving forward for any expansion that the town decides to, to take on. They ran through the permitting costs and O and M costs and, and treatment costs, technologies that sort of surround top 22 and super smart discharge is instrumental amount, more complex and in orders of magnitude, more costs involved in those treatment technologies. So I can't say no, but I think, I think you're making the right decision and we'll at least support that.
All right. Thank you, Clint. Appreciate you being here and Clint's going to stay on as well to, to participate in the, listen to the public comments as well. So thank you. With that, we'll go to a project forecast as mentioned. So again, we're here tonight kicking off, really, this is the kickoff of more public involvement. We are so, so grateful for all of your work, participating in the process today, being here this evening. And then we invite you again, please, if you are not satisfied with your time tonight, allowing everyone to get a chance to speak, please reach out, make an appointment, meet with us, come to town hall, we are there for you. And we are excited to meet again where in August 14th, same place, same time, we'll be here and asking council to really consider providing that direction that enables staff to whatever is decided, to start working with our funding partners and agencies to resume delivering this project. This alternatives analysis is critical, make sure we make the right decision. But as was mentioned, timing is key and speed and delivery is, is really, really important. Moving on, if, if decision and direction is given at that point, we could look at starting a subsequent environmental impact report, supplementing the work that's already been done, doing that as efficiently as possible. We will need to procure some sort of treatment facility designer, resume, resume our funding applications, as I mentioned, looking again at the collection system design, starting the wastewater treatment facility citing alternatives, looking at, again, the design of our collection treatment facilities, completing environmental right of way and so on. So with that, it would really look at completion of design and, and starting construction in 2027 and then finishing in 2029, which I really, really appreciate because there was a schedule many months ago when we were looking at regionalization and this big pivot being this big step back that now we have to look at a local option and it's going to take longer. This schedule, while aggressive, is feasible to get this done instead of 2031, but in 2029. I know that's still a long ways out, but there's a lot, a long road ahead with a lot of important work, but what I'm really excited about is that we have a, a great team to do it. To that end, the question has been asked, why is this time different? Being in this room back in 2017, talking through another feasibility study, and I remember a very important engineer to me came forward and said, you know, I just don't want another feasibility study to go on the shelf in the library and see this town finally deliver a project. Well, a lot of things have changed since 2017, but nothing has changed about this project and how important it is to us. So with that, this time is different because we have the most experienced and capable team to deliver the project with the knowledge of professionals that have done this and built this before. Of this core team, we have about 10 core team members that have over 200 years of experience combined. Eight of those 10 have registered professional engineers licenses and we're really, really grateful for all of the effort they've put into this. But also separate from that, us as a community, we know more about what it takes to build a sewer utility in Paradise than any preceding approach to this project, you know, whether it's the nineties, the 2010s, 2012. Here in 2025, we know a lot more that's benefiting our ability to deliver. But for the first time in the last 30 years, I'll say, the Paradise Sewer Project has a path to construction with funding secured, probable and available. As I mentioned earlier, we've already committed to a rate subsidy as the, as the sewer is a vital investment into our recovery. The project recommended before you tonight and into the future for potential action next month is the most scalable. Allison did a great job presenting about what that first concept could look like. I really want to drive home that that first concept could look like in a way that is foundational and can be built on and expanded to serve the whole service area. So that means the mains are sized appropriately, not just to flow for that first phase one, but to flow for the whole original intended scope of the project. That's critical. And then, as you just heard, we have the full support of the regional board for a local option. We've been through a lot, had to look at regionalization and now to have the support of local, this has an opportunity for us to control our own destiny and build this project. And my closing point here, as we go to, to next steps and public comment, is further delays will reduce our ability to use critical CDBGDR funds on this project or other projects with no replacement sources in sight. 200 million, you know, was allocated to the town back in 2023 to serve a variety and a diverse array of projects. We're looking at Penns Road widening, Skyway, the road projects. Those are all vital and those all have program performance end dates as well as the sewer, the sewer project. So these funds are really, I want to say, once in a lifetime because nobody here wants to go through what we've been through and have another presidentially declared disaster. So with that, we're not going to be eligible for this type of tranche of funding in the future. And so with that in mind, timing and delivery and speed to deliver these funds is absolutely critical and, and, you know, swift action by the community to move this forward and begin full design work on the project is critical. So with that, we'll go ahead to next steps. I'll turn it back over to the mayor to go through this slide as far as receiving public comments and next steps.
Thank you, Mark. So again, before we start there, just to reiterate what we said earlier, you know, if you don't have enough time here, please make an appointment, come in, talk to us because this, this is your town and we want to get it right. So we also have the meeting August 14th and please attend that. So with that being said, we don't have cards tonight. If you'd like to speak, come up each side to the mic in, in a line and you'll have three minutes. So come on up. And as you do, please state your name.
Kelly Consulman. I'm with Paradise Affordable Homes, RRA Builders. I am a local developer and builder. I'm also was participant in this with Mark Maddox in presenting some solutions to the, to the town. I am absolutely 100% pro development and pro sewer solution for this town. I want to see this happen, but I am concerned with some of the numbers and I just kind of like to break this down for you for a second. Originally, our gravity sewer that we were proposing for $400 million, which we said was, was just out of our budget, out of our doing. According to our Paradise Sewer Project handout, which we got online, there was approximately 1,500 parcels that that was going to service, which divided by $400,000 is about $266,000 per parcel. So I did some numbers here quickly. Our lowest projected option, option number one at $114 million comes to, and that's going to service 285 properties approximately, will come to $400,000 per parcel. That would be the allocation. And I know that includes a lot of infrastructure that, that is going to be amortized over a larger system. So, so that's not exactly a, an exact number, but I wanted to break it down a little differently. We have 80, if we have $84 million in funding, we're still $30 million short. We have a shortfall. That $30 million divided by 285 is $105,000 per parcel. That's the shortfall amount. And my question is, how is the business community in those 285 parcels going to support a tax revenue base or an economic development of $105,000 per parcel? And how long will that return on investment take? So I, I really want to look at this at $400,000 per parcel, if we go back to the original proposal of 1,500 parcels being serviced, at this rate, it makes this solution number one come out to $600 million if we were to do it all at one time. And I know obviously if we didn't, those costs would be radically shortened, but we're doing it in stages. I'm just using the numbers based upon what, what has been published. So my concern is, is there a way to simplify this design?
Hi, I'm Bill Hartley and I want to thank you, council and staff members for all the hard work you've done in putting this together and informing the public of, of our different options. I'm a core member of the Paradise Citizens Alliance. We too have looked at some of these studies and we've come to the conclusion that the step system is the best system for Paradise. It's more affordable and can be done in a quicker time than many of the other things Also, it's also, it'll be more disruptive to the community if we do a step system. If you do a gravity system with deeper pipes, larger pipes, we're going to be tearing up our new roads again to put in these pipes. It's going to be disruptive to all of our businesses. And as a property businessman and business owner here in Paradise, on Pearson Road for Joy Lin's Candies, we've seen disruption month after month after month, and now we're going to be seeing more disruption. Our profit margin is slight for a business and to be continually closed or having difficulties keeping our business open or our driveways open could very well shut our doors just after month after month of, of having these issues that we're confronted with. So I really like the step system. The Citizen Alliance thought it was the best system as well, as well as the purple pipe. Thank you for listening to me.
Cliff Jacobson. I'm a community member, also a business owner, and I've done a lot of research on it. First of all, I want to thank you, the ad hoc committee, for your work. I know you have more to do than just the wastewater system and so I appreciate that. I want to say though, that if you have a hammer, everything's going to be a nail. And what I heard tonight was continuously beating up the step system, almost inordinately out of line, and I didn't hear any talk down about lift stations and the odors that come from lift stations, because if you haven't been around a lift station, you haven't smelled anything yet. You're grinding up all of the effluents, solids and everything, and then you're pumping them and those lift stations have to vent. And if you think the odor is bad from a slight pressure release from a point in a low pressure step system, you haven't been around a real lift station. So I would have liked to have seen a little bit more fair because you almost scared me about putting in a step system and I know they work. You need to visit, I can take you to places that has successful step systems. It's unfortunate that you went. It's unfortunate that you went to places that didn't, but that's not the norm. They wouldn't be nation, heck, worldwide if they didn't work, and they've been around for 50, 75 years. On Penns Road, we've got two step systems in two gated communities, one that does recycle water for irrigation, and they've been there for over 25 years, and they've had no problems. I know people that live there. They don't have to rebuild their pumps every year like you guys estimated. If you think there's maintenance involved in a step pump, a little 3/4 horse pump, look at the maintenance involved in a 10, 20, 30, or 90 horse pump that chews up solids. And if you think that solids don't make a difference between step when you're going to a wastewater treatment facility, it makes a big difference. The septic tank does 70 to 80% of your digestion for free, and the effluent is the only problem we've ever had, and that effluent is far easier to treat. And your treatment plant would take up about a 25% footprint to what it's going to take for a full sewer treatment plant when you're having to take the solids that you should have left behind in the septic tank, you grind them up, put them all together, and now you have to separate them out again. Yes, it's going to take a membrane to do that. You're not going to get Title 22 tertiary treatment water the way you're doing it with solids.
Time.
But you can if you have just a step system. Thank you.
I want to thank you as a town management group and all the time you've spent to see this thing work, and I especially liked, oh, okay, I especially liked your recommendation. And I thank for the name, that you used my name when you started. The thing is, that's the way to go. The only thing I'd like to see is the constructed wetlands can be used behind structures and the water stays on the property. What we don't have is regulations from the state or the town so that independent contractors, when a leach line fails, that we could actually replace it with a small wetlands. And it's a funny thing because it invites insects and birds and flowers and all sorts of things like that, and the water doesn't leave the property. So rather than having to let it go to a station somewhere, it stays on the property. And in France, they developed one which will fit on a small lot like we have small lots up here. It's an alternate for you within an alternate, and it is practical, manages time. And overseas, different countries have licenses, clubs, and everything else where there has developed constructed wetlands in the last 30 years, and the amount of articles available now has increased at least 10 times, and the town knows more about them than I do now. They've done a thorough checking on them, investigating, comparing dollars and cents and all that, and I really thank you all together for doing a great job.
This evening needs to be shorter for me. Good evening, Mayor Crowder and Vice Mayor Lang and council and city employees. Thank you for that very good presentation of which I understood about 40% of it, but I do agree with what you put forward. I have been out to Biggs, and I have toured and talked with their town in depth about what they do and how it works, and they have had nothing but success as far as I know with that, so I think that's a great way to go. The congressman supports the Town of Paradise 100%. I would suggest that we, if you apply for community project funding for the 27, year 27, that we don't include the Army Corps of Engineers at all, that we go a different route, maybe through an ag, an ag committee of some sort that might be more productive, and we could get that money for the town quicker. And so, you know, I agree with Mark and everything that this needs to move, and it needs to move quickly, so we will be here for whatever you need, and you all know how to get ahold of me. Thank you.
John Remalia, local resident. You know, I've kind of got mixed feelings tonight. I would like to see something done, but when I see the amount of money that is going to be spent for it and the number of parcels that benefit it, it scares me. We spent 13 and a half million dollars that we didn't have last year. That money, if we keep up with the current rate, if we look at the past three years of return on our investment, we're going to be out of money in about eight years. I, you know, if this is going to be a benefit, or if this is going to be a small area of town, it should be a benefit assessment district, and I don't think that you're going to get the property owners to vote for it. On the other hand, you know what? Go for the most expensive system. Within seven to 10 years, we'll be county. And lastly, it's, the step system is the best system. You guys are forgetting, there's 100 operating systems in your service area. The majority of them are pumped systems. Either they have a recirculator in them to, for the biomembrane reactor, or they have a pressurized leach field, all which require pumps. Leave the pumps to be owned by the property owner. If their pump fails, it's only going to affect their house. Thank you.
John Stoneraker here. I was at the County Planning Commission this morning with the topic of the extension of the map for the Tuscan Ridge subdivision. One of their issues is what they're going to do with their wastewater. The initial conditions of approval were that either PID would take care of it, or they would create a CSA to take care of it. PID is no longer interested in dealing with that problem, and Kim Hunter from Public Works Land Development said that they're not interested in either. They said it is not one of their core services, that they have to contract it out, and that it is extremely expensive. So I recommend that whatever you choose, you either form a JPA with PID or support their expansion of powers so that this can be done by a government entity rather than hired out to expensive third-party contractors. The costs of initial construction don't really address the cost of operations for the different options, and I think that's important to have, certainly before the August 14th meeting, to understand how many millions of dollars year after year is it going to take even for this little Phase One? And I echo some of the previous commenters about the amount of money that's being spent per parcel. I don't know that a benefit assessment district is the way to go. Certainly, if a tax increment financing district is the way to go, that should be looked at and then brought to the public in advance of the next meeting so that you can say, okay, we're going to spend all of this money on this infrastructure with the assumption that when these businesses come back into this corridor, that's going to build back the tax base and pay off this initial investment. It's been done in many places. It's probably the way to fund the gap, if that's what you need to do. But certainly, look at that and present to your citizenry the ways in which this is not a giveaway, that this is going to pay back to the town, because we do want to see commerce return to the town. We want to see the town come back to what it had been. We agree that creating, even if it's just this small little place where you can have these additional restaurants and a hotel and the other businesses that are going to use lots of water that can't disperse it all in their tiny little parcels. And the other thing that I might have some concern about is, I know it might be 2026 before you really figure out where you're going to site the lagoon or the constructed wetlands or what have you, but one of those maps certainly imply that it's going to have to be outside current town limits, like down by Bay Tree or on the Walmart parcel or something like that. So if that is your intention, then certainly that needs to be discussed through LAFCO and brought to the public and saying, hey, you know, we know that we don't want to have this like Sterling-style lagoon within town limits. We're going to have to put that outside town limits, but make that known, because I think that's going to be a concern to the voters, that they don't want to have the lagoon or what have you right next to them. Again, we hope that you can make this happen within the timeframe and leverage all of these disaster relief funds. We want to see this happen. Thanks to Terry and the congressman for all their support.
Time.
My name is Susan Davis. I've been a Paradise resident for decades and want to echo the appreciation that's been extended to you by many of the attendees tonight. I want to respectfully disagree with the speaker who said the presentation seemed terribly slighted against the step system. I felt that the presentation, which was very comprehensive, gave pros and cons to each of the options and explained why the Ad Hoc Committee ultimately is recommending a blend of both the step and the gravity system. I think when we're talking about so many millions and millions of dollars, those are scary numbers. What scares me more is that we don't move forward with this. I think it will be a travesty not to go forward. I think that all of the love and passion and energy that employees and community members and nonprofits and other agencies have expended to revitalize Paradise, that effort will be for naught if we don't get a system in place that better serves our business people as well as our residents.
Hello, my name is Bill Sherret. I appreciate all the work you guys have done. I think you guys have done an excellent job. One of my concerns, my concerns are financial. So $114 million, is that today's price, or is that the price it's going to be when the project starts? In other words, I'm on the school board, construction costs go up 5 to 10% every year, so if you're not going to start construction for another three years, have you factored that in? Are you doing a design bid build concept where you don't get a guaranteed price, or you're getting a guaranteed price through another type of construction? I'm very concerned about the $114 million three years from now is my concern, but I think you guys have done a great job. Thank you.
While we're waiting for the next comment, I just might mention that the $114 million is estimated to the midpoint of construction, which is common practice, so you're not starting at dollars for when you break ground or when you finish, and so they have been adequately escalated to the midpoint of construction.
My name is Liza Whitmore. Been Paradise resident for many years. I used to work at Caltrans with Jody Jones, and Jody, when she resigned from Caltrans and retired, we were talking, and she said, I'm going to be going on the planning commission, I'm going to be getting involved in Paradise, and one of the things that I want to have happen is we have got to have a sewer system in this town. So I would like to bring up Jody's memory as just something to be able to say that indeed this has to move forward in some way, shape, or form. I understand very good I was going to bring up the costs in three years. I think you have to be very upfront with people and the voters about what that is going to look like and how you are going to get the money and from where, as those costs probably are definitely going to exponentially increase. I also understand that we certainly do not want to see more stuff going in and under our roads, but as I mentioned, I work at Caltrans, and for big public works projects, you have to suffer for a little bit, but the infrastructure that will be there for the forthcoming future will be worth it. So yes, I am willing to drive on the bumpy roads and put my car halfway over in the gutter in order to avoid all the little bumps and things, but we need to move forward. But I echo the gentleman with the mask, of being upfront with people about what is going to be coming down the pike, and I don't know that there's, you know, if you're going to have some additional information that can come out to people, a little synopsis sheet or something like that before the 14th, but that'll be very, very critical, I think, for folks. My last question is, do you need a vote of the people to move forward with this? Or is this something that the town council can say, this is what we're going to do, and this is how we're going to do it? So I don't know if somebody can ask me, answer that question right now.
Yeah, we're going to make a decision, a good direction, the staff, either go forward or not.
Okay.
Either go forward or not. It's not something we'll be put to a vote.
That has to go out to a vote. Okay.
Tonight's meeting, meeting's on the 14th, and meetings any of you want to have with the staff or the committee people from now until the 14th, to everybody's point, we're not kicking the can down the road. We're going to find something. We've done a lot of research. We found a way to fund it. We have some alternatives for the shortfalls off, and I think they've plugged everything into this. The numbers we're looking at are worst-case scenarios, and they've taken all these things into account. So, and there's more. Once a direction is given, once the staff has been told, go this way, then there'll be even more numbers, more accurate numbers. Here's what it's going to cost you if you have a property. You know, here's how many years the town will subsidize it, what that'll be. All of that stuff will come out once a plan is set, do this, head down that path.
Okay. Thank you very much for everybody's effort, for keeping Jody in mind.
Any more questions from the audience? Okay, so with that, I've been asked that council might like to chime in here, so Ron?
Yeah, I'd like to make two comments, not specifically about the choice. That's the sewer committee that's been working on that, and they've done a fantastic job. I've been educated a lot because the way it works, only two of them can be on that committee. More than that's a round act violation because you have to hear what's going on and how we debate things. So thank you for giving us all this great information. But my concern is around, we've got to get a sewer. I'm on the Walkable Downtown Subcommittee, and its focus is trying to convince people to build structures in our walkable downtown, and it is walkable. If you go downtown, there are sidewalks there, there's lamp poles, there's landscaping, there are just no businesses there, or there's 142 vacant lots in that area. And in the discussions that I've had with businesses about coming back, a lot of them are saying, yes, we're watching what's going on in Paradise, we're interested, but they're not ready to commit until we get them a viable plan that says, we're going to have a sewer by this date. Then they can basically do their structure, their planning process and their fundraising process to start thinking about coming back to Paradise. So without the sewer, we will not have businesses in our downtown area more than what we currently have. The businesses you've been seeing coming back are principally been going into existing buildings that had existing septic tanks. Two exceptions to that is, of course, Barney O'Rourke's and the Burkett Automotive Section, where they put new structures in and they filled up right away. So businesses will come back to Paradise if there's a viable option for them to treat their wastewater. Without it, not going to happen. So this team that has put together a great plan has got to go forward, and we've got to. The only thing I'm a little disappointed in is the 2029 date. I'd like to see it sooner than that, guys, I really would, so then businesses will come back sooner. Now, the reason why I'm so interested in businesses coming back is because I'm also on the healthcare Subcommittee, and in order to get healthcare up here on the ridge, we have to have a population that will support that. We're working through those details now. There's a study going on, and we'll present that back to the community. But one of the key things is the numbers. It's a numbers game. Yeah, we're a little over 11,000, they're looking for more numbers. Rural healthcare is really hard in our nation now because of the reimbursement rates, but even if you have, you know, a good reimbursement, if you have a small number, it doesn't pencil out. So in order for the healthcare to grow, we've also got to have more businesses which will bring more rooftops that people build to put their families in that will then be using those healthcare services, and we can justify getting more of that up here on the ridge. So those two projects that I'm on are totally dependent on the success of this team's sewer Subcommittee. They've got to get it going, they've got to get it sooner than 2029. Mark? The gauntlet's thrown down, buddy. We need it sooner. I know you pulled it up, but if you can pull it up further, I'd be happy. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Any other comments from council? Any other comments from Council?
I just wanted to add a couple of comments that were covered in a handful of the comments that, you know, like Mark said, these cost estimates have been projected out to mid-project and erred on the high side. So we are really trying to keep that, be mindful of that, and not get ourselves into another spot financially. And then as far as the sites, you know, one thing that's been kind of frustrating for me is that you have to identify the treatment type, because each treatment type has a different quality effluent. And the quality of effluent determines the discharge types that are options, and the discharge types prioritizes the site and might narrow that down. So you kind of have to check one box, move on to the next, check the next box. So yeah, we would like to roll this all out in one nice, neat, little, tidy, you know, presentation, but first things first. And then I would also like to add that there has been notable developer interest, that people that have reached out to me personally, asking, you know, repeatedly, when are we going to reach this population threshold, and when is the sewer breaking ground? Because we are, you know, on the edge of our seats, and I don't have a crystal ball for either of those, but I am, like Ron, wanting to see that, and like the rest of the Council, wanting to see that sooner rather than later. So I keep a shovel in the back of my truck.
I want to comment. I want to check with Mark earlier today. One of the -- I think about these kinds of things is, you know, one of the concerns I had is that once this thing starts and we start digging up the brand-new roads again to put these sewer pipes in, I said, you know, we have a one dig or zero dig or some -- we have a policy. Once our roads are repaved, the new roads are in, if anybody digs a hole in that road, they have to pave the whole lane, not just put a little patch in. And we, the town, are going to be held to the same standard. So just so you know, the days of bumpy roads and potholes and stuff really are coming to an end one day soon.
Anything else from anybody?
Somebody wants to talk. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Paul Forsyth. Can you disclose where the treatment facility is going to be?
We have not identified it yet.
We have not identified it yet.
Do you have some ideas?
Probably Lower Skyway, but we have not identified it yet.
When do you think you're going to disclose that to people?
When we figure it out. We haven't figured it out yet. So when we figure it out, we will disclose it.
Is it going to be in '27, '28, '29?
I just might want to interject and say, the EIR process, the supplemental EIR work that needs to take place, that once direction is given to advance the project or a version of the project, will kick off a revalid -- or I'm sorry, not a revalidation, but a supplemental environmental impact report, where citing a treatment facility, no matter the technology, alternatives will be compared. Different sites, as was just mentioned, will have different advantages and disadvantages. So that'll be a really great process to identify the site. And if we go back to that slide, that could begin as early as September and then be complete early next year. And then there will definitely be opportunities for public comment.
Okay, thanks.
If we pick a site marked as outside of town limits, do we have to go through LAFCO and everything to annex?
Yes, we have had initial coordination with LAFCO in case that was an alternative. Again, trying to be as complete as possible as early as possible. And so LAFCO has been great partners in all versions of this project, including this one. If we do something in town, there's no action required. If we do something out of town, we can pursue what's called essentially an annexation outside of town limits. There's a special term for that. It's almost like an island that essentially is still within the Town of Paradise limits, even though it's not contiguous to the town limits as it exists today.
Okay. No other questions? So with that, don't forget August 14th, and with that, we're adjourned.